Patent Township Board of Supervisors meeting at February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at five thirty to order. We welcome all, especially new Patent Township residents, to the Patent Township community of place for all. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone, also for those who are celebrating Lent. It's Ash Wednesday, and all the other big party people, it's Fat Tuesday. After today. Okay. As you are able, please rise and join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements?
No.
All right. Are there any additions to the posted agenda? Are there any additional items that the board would like to add to the posted agenda at this time? And hopefully that it was submitted early in accordance to Act sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-one. Seeing none. Next on the agenda is public comments. Residents, taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom, please use the raised hand Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Respect is given, and always this board will respect our residents. Okay? And public comments are limited to five minutes per person? Are there any public comments at this time? All right, seeing none. Next on the agenda is our proclamation. The first on the agenda is the Black History Month proclamation. Black History Month is celebrated annually in February. The two thousand and twenty-four theme is African-Americans and the arts. And before we vote on our proclamation, the proclamation reads: Patent Township Board of Supervisors, proclamation of place for all, recognizing February as Black History Month, whereas Patent Township recognizes February as Black History Month in celebration of diversity, equity, and inclusion, to maintain a community that welcomes all citizens. Whereas the two thousand and twenty-four Black History Month theme is African-Americans and the arts, which recognizes the many contributions of and achievements by Black and African-Americans in the creative and performing arts. Whereas in nineteen fifteen, Dr. Carter G. Woodson traveled to Chicago from his home in Washington, D.C., to take part in the national week-long celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of Emancipation Proclamation. Before leaving Chicago, Woodson helped founded the Association of Study of Negro Life and History, whereas Dr. Woodson believed that young African-Americans were not being taught enough about their own heritage and the achievement of their ancestor. Dr. Woodson also viewed Black History Month as something that should not be confined to one week. As early as nineteen forty, the efforts began to expand the week of a public celebration of African-American heritage and achievement into a longer event. Whereas in nineteen seventy-six, on the fiftieth anniversary of the first Negro History Week, the association officially made the shift to Black History Month. Since that time, every U.S. president has issued a proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Gerald Ford began the tradition in nineteen seventy-six, noting that the celebration enables people to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endearment throughout our history. Whereas Barack Obama, the first, the nation's first Black president, made the last proclamation in honor of Dr. Carter G. Woodson's initiative. While it is essential to acknowledge the measurable struggles and hardships of Black and African-Americans, let us also celebrate their survival and acknowledge their accomplishments in two thousand and twenty-four honoring Black and African-Americans within the arts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors does hereby join the nation in honoring the contributions of Black and African-Americans recognized in February as Black History Month, to remember their legacy, perseverance, and accomplishments in which contributes to the goals of ensuring that Patent Township is a place for all, proclaimed this fourteenth day in February by the Patent Township Board of Supervisors. Can I get a motion to?
Some more?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes and the proclamation is passed. Thank you.
Comments?
I think Terry has something.
Terry?
Indeed. So, thank you for reading that wonderful proclamation, Pam. So this, hello, I'm Terry Watson. I think most people in this group know who I am. I'm a Patent Town resident. I'm an author, the chair of the Community Campus Unity Group, and the newly appointed Patent Township member of the Human Relations Commission. Thank you for that trust. And I'm also honored to serve in that capacity. I'm also honored to be here to read, listen to that proclamation over by Pam. Just a few comments, and I definitely will be short. I think you mentioned about the founding of Black History Month. But like you said, this year, the theme is African-Americans and the arts. This year, we recognize the rich history that African-Americans have had with visual, performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, and music, culinary arts, and other forms of cultural expressions. And thinking about the performing arts and music, this weekend, my daughter and I, we actually had the privilege of driving to Pittsburgh to see the play The Blues Is The Root, which was written by no other than our very own Charles Dumas, a longtime State College resident, civil rights activist, actor, and writer, and professor emeritus at Penn State. And also one of Dumas' old students, also a Penn State alum, Herb Newtson, was director of the play. I was fortunate enough to see this with Ayesha because it reminded us of how African-Americans in the arts have shaped America, even if not recognized at the time. So to folks like Willie Mae Thornton, and Willie Dixon, and Howlin' Ruth, and Otis Blackwell, and Art Tatum, and Thomas Blind Tom Wiggins, to the literary geniuses like Bell Hooks, and Langston Hughes, and James Baldwin, Richard Wright, and Nikki Giavani, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we also celebrated fifty years of hip-hop. But as I read these names, it also reminds me of the quote that came from the play that Dumas wrote that was titled Blues Is The Root. And the quote was simple: Blues is the root, and everything else is the fruit. Willie Dixon reminded us that the blues planted the roots, and everything musically that followed is the fruit. However, these words also reminded us that with this new fruit, we have a responsibility to recognize the importance of these roots and the significance of the landscape of America as it portrays today. And although the roots are not always seen and recognized, they are essential to the American foundation and presence as it is today. So as we recognize the importance of African-Americans in the arts, I applaud that we continue to recognize contributions of African-Americans year-round. It should be in our literatures, schools, libraries, or any institution responsible for educating or representing the people. It should be in our conversations and in our humanity. And I will end with a quote from Desmond Tutu: My humanity is bound up in yours, for we can only be human together. So with that, I'll ask my daughter, who is my favorite artist, to have a few words, too.
I'm Ayesha Watson. I'm a state high student. Let's explore how different forms of art go beyond just what we see. Think about literature, music, and performance. They're all types of art. And guess what? The African-American community has played a huge role in making these arts amazing. Have you ever noticed how cool and diverse music and dance are? Well, Black people have had a big hand in creating different styles that inspire everyone. It's like they've left their mark on the rhythm and beats that gets us all moving. Now let's talk about why African-American art matters. The Black experience is one of a kind, and that uniqueness shapes the thoughts of the people creating the art. It's like their stories and perspective come alive in what they create, making it all the more special. Think about the TV shows, movies, and music videos you watch. It's important that Black people are part of what you see. Seeing people who look like you on screen or in music can be super inspiring. It's like finding a piece of yourself in the things you love. And even if a Black artist doesn't make a big deal about their race and what they create, it still matters. Just by being there, they're making a path for others to follow. They're letting their voice be heard, and that's a big deal. So let's celebrate African-American art. It's not just about enjoying the cool stuff they make, but also about making sure everyone's voice gets a chance to be heard and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Patent Township. I'm so glad to be before you. My name is Leslie Lang. I am a State College resident for seventeen years. I joined Terry and his daughter Ayesha with our remarks for Black History Month. And in our community, I serve as the Director for Adult Learner Programs at Penn State. I am the Forum on Black Affairs two thousand and twenty-three Humanitarian of the Year, and I also serve our community as the Juneteenth Planning Committee, for which you have supported. So I thank you for that support. It gives me great pleasure to acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of African-Americans with your lovely proclamation of February as Black History Month in Patent Township. Last year, we came before you when we talked about firsts in politics. And so we love your board. It's looking more diverse, so thank you again. And this year, our theme is arts and art in education. And so as you mentioned, the proclamation for Carter G. Woodson, he's a notable historian and educator who founded traditional celebrations way back from nineteen seventy-six, when we all began celebrating the month. But what many do not know about Carter G. Woodson was that he was born to former slaves, and he was the second African-American to earn a doctoral degree from Harvard University, and he served as the dean of Howard University. He felt that white-dominated professions showed very little interest in Black history, and so Black history was overlooked and ignored and suppressed by the writers of textbooks. So Carter G. Woodson began a scholarly journal of Negro history, and it's now in its second century. And this award-winning journal is published under the Journal of African-American History. And locally, our librarian, Racine Ramos, launched the idea and became a collective public history in the arts called the Black History of Center County Project of two thousand and nineteen. And she was hoping to actually open the eyes of our residents and talk about the contributions being made right here in central Pennsylvania. And one of our graduate students, Carmen Wong, she wrote a play based on our local history, and it was performed in Belfond in April of two thousand and twenty-three. All of you may also know, like Terry mentioned, Charles Dumas. You may also know Dr. Anthony Leach. He is a world-renowned music conductor, and he's a retired professor of music education at Penn State, and he's the founder of Essence of Joy and Essence of Two, and the founder of the African-American Music Festival that runs throughout the month of February. And it showcases performances by, yes, artists and students and faculty showcasing music for the African-American composers. Now, of course, like Ayesha pointed out, arts also includes literature, and fashion, folklore, and language, and film, and music, and many more forms of rich African-American cultural expression. And earlier in February, we had two graduate students that went through another township. And what was remarkable about their remarks about Black history is they remembered their classrooms and how influential it was. Folen recanted the memories of learning about Langston Hughes and Maya Angelou's and others who inspired courage and education, and reminded us of Marion Wright Edelman, the founder and president of the Children's Defense Fund, who said, "You can't be what you can't see." Vision is imperative for our actions, our choices, our dreams, and our fulfillment. Kessler also shared that impressionable Black young students are often isolated in their classrooms and elementary schools, devoid of seeing Black teachers in their colleges or until they get to college. So they rely on literature, and she found reflection and fell in love with writing and became one, because Black literature must be taught and celebrated in our communities as part of our liberation. Everyone deserves the freedom to read. Maya Angelou said, "Any book that helps a child to form a habit of reading, to make reading one of its deep and continuing needs, is good for him." So we call on our commissioners, we call on our supervisors, we know Pam reads to the children downtown for African-American History Month. Studying Black history in our public schools is imperative. And so I have brought Dr. Baron Rogers to share, and two undergraduate students, just to share brief remarks with you about why Black History Month is important to them.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alexandra Metter. I am a fourth-year biology student with a minor in psychological science. After graduation, I plan on furthering my education in the medical field. Currently, I serve as the first vice president of Penn State's NAACP organization. And Black History Month is important to us because our purpose is to improve the political, educational, social, and economic status of minority groups. Sorry. To eliminate racial prejudice and to keep the public aware of the adverse effects of racial discrimination, and lastly, to take all lawful action to secure its elimination and recognize national members who have worked towards doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lanay Amari, and I am a third year currently at Penn State studying criminology. After graduating, I plan to go to law school and pursue criminal law. Currently, I serve as the president of the Penn State's NAACP chapter. I wanted to read a quote by Thurgood Marshall, who represented the NAACP legally and also served as our first Black Supreme Court Justice. He said, "I wish that I could say that racism and prejudice were only distant memories. We must dissent from the indifference, we must dissent from the apathy, we must dissent from the fear, the hatred, and the mistrust. We must dissent, because America can do better, because America has no choice but to do better." Now, on behalf of the student NAACP chapter, we do appreciate the efforts made by the Patent Township to support diversity, equity, and inclusion, and acknowledging and adopting Black History Month proclamation, and for recognizing the contributions that African-Americans have made thus far. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Excuse me. Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Baron Rogers, and I'm a staff psychologist. So great to be with you all this evening. And I have to, like, compose myself because I feel called to, like, clap. It's also wonderful to come after everyone who spoke today. So I won't take up too much of your time, but I want to lead with one quote in particular, which is from Frederick Douglass: "The soul that is within me, no man can degrade." The soul that is within me, no man can degrade. When we talk about art, when we talk about the art, art of Black folk, it cannot be in the context of systemic discrimination, Jim Crow, redlining, denial of loans for homes, prejudice. It cannot be in the context of every historical wrong, that Black people have diminished souls and still produce works, from Zora Neale Hurston or Langston Hughes, Marvin Gaye, Rita Dove. It cannot be with diminished and degraded souls, that art that has flourished and existed in our country for hundreds of years came from people with diminished and degraded souls. It cannot be true. For all of you here, I want to encourage your work today with not diminished or degraded souls, but ones with bounty and flourish. The work that you all do, the work that we all do, is one we must do with full souls and spirits and kindness. We must be effortful. Because it was Toni Morrison who said, "What's the world for if you can't make it up the way you want it?" But simply don't make it up for yourself. Make it up for the people in this room and the people who aren't. I'm a recently expectant father. Thank you. But if you could, make this county one for my child yet to be born. Now, with the degraded, diminished soul, I know your work is hard, and I appreciate that, that you all are effortful in what you do. You wouldn't be here if you weren't, that if you didn't care, you wouldn't be here. But do not allow the belief or the feeling to diminish your sense of yourself and your soul. It is not true. We struggle, but we create art and we flourish, and it's that context and that energy from all of our history as Black folk that we preserve and we carry, and you can carry, too. So I leave you today with a heartfelt and soulful pride, joy, kindness, and encourage you all to lead with full souls yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Patent Township. We hope that you have appreciated our contributions, as well as acknowledge that it's so important to all your residents that six of us would come to share our heartfelt stories and our experiences as part of your community. And we do not take it for granted, we don't want you to take it for granted, and we never underestimate the power of education. The Black Arts Movement of the nineteen sixties and seventies is the most successful example of activism, establishing Black publishing houses, magazines, journals, art institutions, and it also led to the creation of African-American studies at all of our universities. So we must keep the movement in motion. Thank you for continuing to recognize our values, our accomplishments, and contributions that make Black history our history. Thank you.
Does any of our board members would like to speak at this time? I see my board is quite quiet, but I'm not going to be quiet. Betsy, I'm sorry.
You can go. No, that's right. I was waiting. I just want to thank everybody who attended and everybody who spoke tonight for bringing life to this proclamation. Often, a proclamation is words that sit in a cupboard somewhere until the next year or whatever. And as much as they mean to me, they often don't travel beyond this room, but I believe that tonight this will, and it certainly has expanded for me. So I really thank you for, not just for the proclamation, but for everything that you bring to this world. Thank you so much.
Like I said, I'm overwhelmed. As a trailblazer, and I sit beside Dr. Sudan McGruder, we made history here. You have a chair and vice chair. It's not because of us, it's because of this board, these staff members that believed and didn't see just of color. But what we stood for, our experience, I look out and, and I, forgive me, when I say young people, I'm turning seventy, so I can say, young people. You are our future, and I am so proud to believe that we have so much to give. And listening to you tonight, the world, Center County, can see what we have to offer. And it's not what we sit here and say, but what we stand for. We stand on the shoulders of Charles Dumas. We stand on the shoulders of Harriet Tubman, Martin Luther King, Bishop Tutu, Mandela, who's taught us survival. We've survived, and we will continue to survive. We will continue to face the ugliness of racism. But there's an other side to racism, and there's a brightness. And I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it. There's a light in you guys. There's a light coming in our future. And continue to strive, continue to be the voice of the voiceless. Leslie, Terry, Dr., I am so overwhelmed tonight, and I speak for this board, who stand behind the words that we say, "A place for all." Patent Township is a place for all, and believe it. When your unborn child decides to look into living, look at Patent Township, because they were- because they were the first. They were the first to take the stand to see us for who we are. I stand here, I sit here as a chair. Vice chair is coming in. My vice chair will be chair next year. Where there's a path, trail blazing, and I see a brightness to my solicitor. I'm looking at law. This brightness, there's a future. Chief, law enforcement to our community that's looking at us tonight. There is a light beyond the darkness. And it starts here at Patton Township, "A place for all." So, I thank you all. I know we have a proclamation that should be given out. Do we have a...
I need you all to sign it.
Okay. As soon as we all sign it, Leslie, can we get it to you and Terry? I know you guys are running to other township, other community meetings to spread the word. But be proud that tonight Patton Township is as proud of you as we can be. So, light them up. You want to sign?
Do you want me to send it down for you guys to sign?
Can we send it to you later? I know we need to be moving on because we have...
Do you need to take a photo?
Yeah.
Why don't we get a picture and make sure that's on our social?
All of the board.
Why don't you guys turn this way so you're not on the screen?
Oh, okay.
All right. Why don't you on the end come this way so you're not on the screen? Sit down here a little bit.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you.
One more. Okay, go.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your patience and your understanding. All right. Next on my agenda is the proclamation for the 2024 Lunar New Year. The 2024 is to celebrate as the Year of the Dragon. Lunar New Year celebrated on February the 10th to receive the proclamation. Betsy is going to read it first, and I think, Judge Hahn, you want to come up? Or whoever wants to come up after she reads it is fine. Betsy, you want to read?
Sure. Can people hear me? Okay. First of all, I want to say I'm very honored to read this. My two daughters are Chinese, and so this has a personal meaning for me. We do celebrate Lunar New Year. Whereas Lunar New Year is an important holiday for many Asian communities around the world and for Americans of Asian origin, including those of Chinese, Korean, Vietnamese, Tibetan, Mongolian, Singaporean, Malaysian, Filipino heritage. The Lunar New Year tradition across these cultures are varied, but all focus on celebrating and strengthening family and community beliefs, bonds. Whereas, the Lunar New Year Spring Festival is based on the lunar calendar, which includes the Chinese zodiac or Shang Xiaol, a repeating 12-year cycle of animal signs and their ascribed attributes. Whereas, though the animal signs can vary across cultures, the Lunar New Year marks the transition from one animal to the next, with February 9th, 2024, ending the year of the rabbit, and February 10th, 2024, starting the year of the dragon. The dragon is the fifth of the 12 zodiac animal signs, and those born in the new year of the dragon are often seen as courageous and intelligent. Congratulations. Often displaying tenacity, enthusiasm, and confidence. Whereas, Center County greatly benefits from the creativity, enterprise, skill, and diverse heritage of our Asian-Pacific Desi-Americans or Apida residents, some of whom are new immigrants, while others are first, second, or even fifth-generation Americans. Over 10,000 Apida residents live, work, and play throughout the country's large and small communities, contributing to our economy and enriching the ethnic and social fabric of our community with multiple languages, cultures, and religious beliefs. Like all major holidays around the globe, the Lunar New Year unites families over generations and honors the eternal bond of respect, honor, and love for family, community, and country. Those celebrating Lunar New Year are our beloved friends and family, our cherished neighbors, and valued members of the Patton Township community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Patton Township Board of Supervisors do proclaim February 10th, 2024's Lunar New Year in Patton Township, and wish everyone celebrating the holiday a Happy New Year, Happy Lunar New Year. We encourage everyone in Patton Township to join in the spirit of celebration and reaffirm our community's commitment to family, diversity, mutual respect, and creating an inclusive environment of belonging for all our residents. Proclaim this 14th day of February 2024 by the Patton Township Board of Supervisors, Center County, Pennsylvania.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the proclamation for Lunar New Year 2024? A second?
A second.
Discussion, hearing on. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? The proclamation is adopted. Thank you. Supervisor, you?
For anyone who would like a souvenir of this, the U.S. Mint for years has printed special dollars and art that can be purchased from the Mint commemorating the Lunar New Year. And they're very colorful and nice, and a lot of people aren't aware of them.
Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Thanks for the information. I actually was not aware of that. I'll be looking that up shortly. My name is Donald Han. I am a former mayor of State College, currently a magisterial district judge, but today I'm representing the Panapida Caucus. Stands for Asian-Pacific Islander Desi-American Caucus. And on behalf of the caucus, I wish to thank Patton Township for showing its ongoing support for the Apida community by voting affirmatively on this lovely proclamation. I want to add that one of America's ongoing superpowers is excellence in higher education. And I think that essentially, one of the amazing things is how many people come from across the world, around the world, in order to be educated here in central Pennsylvania. Now, my parents, that you were, went to be educated in California, but wound up here in order to teach math at this university. And I think that it is, I think it is acknowledgement that this is a fine university community inasmuch as I think that, and all of the Asian students who come here, and out of which I think the Chinese is probably the most numerous, and Koreans are the third most numerous, and both of whom celebrate the Lunar New Year. I have to admit that I haven't been all that diligent myself in celebrating Lunar New Year, but it is, in fact, a combination of a family reunion and birthday because everyone, apparently, everyone who celebrates it gets a year older on Lunar New Year. And quite frankly, my family actually celebrated in the solar new year, January 1st, but our traditions are very much modeled after the Lunar New Year celebration. We would bow to our elders and receive red purses of coins in return. I think my parents gave me some dollar bills rather than coins. We would also eat soup with savory rice cakes and play the game, a Korean game called Yut, which is sort of a Korean version of Trouble, in which instead of popping the bubble and realigning the dice, you throw some sticks to find out how many places the character moves. Although, quite frankly, depending on the throwing style, it can be actually rather hazardous, but usually very elegant. But I wish to, once again, thank Patton Township for the proclamation. And when, introduce the Patton Township president.
I am so honored to be here today, celebrating Lunar New Year, but also celebrating Black History Month. And I thank you so much for recognition of this day. And I am Jiun Ri. I'm teaching in comparative literature and Asian studies. This is my fifth year here, and I was teaching in other places, in three different continents. I must say that this has been, the last five years, has been really, really interesting and a very inspiring university in particular. Since Donald mentioned education, I can talk a little bit about my experience of education here. A few days ago, I received an email from a student who's an African-American student, studied Korean, and now she's in Korea. And she's studying Korean, and she wants to continue her study in political science. And she told me how much she enjoyed Taku, which is a rice cake soup, and she's learning about the culture there. So, not only just the students from all over the places come here and receive education, we have a lot of students here experience what Asia is like and Asian countries and their history and politics and so on. So, this is a really interesting encounter for young generation. And I also have anecdotes in a classroom where I also teach about BTS and so on. And, you know, some students say, "Well, Happy Lunar New Year." And this is the first time a student actually congratulated me to have this Lunar New Year, and I was really impressed. And this shows how much our students are really conscious of this international community and diversity and inclusion. And they are not just learning the language, they are really care, they really care about other cultures and people from other countries. So, this is the kind of community we live, and I'm really proud of my students. So, this is a really special day for me.
That's mine. We understand. Trust me when I tell you. The tears of hardship and explaining acknowledgement. We are finally getting acknowledged. We understand. Trust me. So, let the tears flow.
So, I really appreciate this opportunity, and thank you so much. And, you know, we love Lunar New Year for all those games and rice cake soup. The only complaint I have is that, you know, we have different day every year, so it's really hard to keep it up. But, you know, it's on a special day. It's really meaningful to have all of you celebrating. So, I really thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming. Any of our board members would like, what was that? Oh, yes. Can we get a picture? To the judge, I want to thank you and for coming in, and both of you. I had to honor this, well, two weeks ago of storytelling. And for the first time this year, I told stories about baby dragons. I had no idea what the Year of the Dragon, but I had stuffed animals that were Chinese dragons in the midst of all different kinds of dragons. And to be able to see the joy in the young kids' faces and their parents, I have to thank you. Because we are all learning about each other's history, and it's a constant education. So, as we say, and did I hear you, you're a part of Patton Township? You live in Patton Township? Write it down. Yes. "A place for all." So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We continue to express we are a community and a place for all, and we mean that. So, please feel free to contact us and let us learn, continue to learn and grow. So, thank you. Ready? Next on the agenda, all right, is CADA and services cut and budget issues. And tonight, we have our CADA representative chair and our representative from Patton, Mark Parfitt. Thank you, Mark, for taking the time out to come and explain to the board about the services cuts and budget issues.
Sure. Thank you, Pam, for inviting me. Pam called me last week. There's been a lot of information going around, some of it accurate, some of it not accurate. And what she asked me to present tonight is the backstory of how we landed where we're at. So, I apologize. I'm condensing about 10 years into a very short segment tonight. But as you know, CADA is a joint authority established by five member municipalities, including Patton Township. And our joint articles of agreement that were passed by the supervisors at the time of those five municipalities allow us to offer service to contract municipalities, but they must be in a cost-recovery mode, meaning that the cost of a service, we're allowed to subtract state and federal subsidies, the passenger fare, and then everything else needs to be covered by those contractors. else needs to be covered by those contracted municipalities. Good start. Our challenges in the contracted area, uh, I would say have been going on for years, but I'm going to start in 2015. That's when Belfont Borough Council refused to pay a modest $3,600 increase in local match, just outright refused. This action jeopardized service of what was then the XB and the XG routes that served the Benner Pike area of Belfont Pleasant Gap. At the very last minute, a private donor, not Belfont Borough Council, stepped up to donate this amount to keep the buses running in the greater Belfont area. Fast forward a couple more years, Spring Township has threatened to withdraw from CADA in 2021, 2022, and 2023, and finally did in 2024. I want to make a note, Patton Township has never threatened to withdraw from CADA. Uh, prior to this coming fiscal year, contributions from our contracted municipalities were placed into what we called CADA's state mandated local match. I've explained before, think of that as like a pie and it always needs to equal 100%. With these contracted municipalities constantly threatening to pull out of CADA, it creates a constant anxiety for our member municipalities because they are the ones who have to come up with the money to make up that missing piece of the pie if, if a contracted municipality backs out. We worked with the, the member municipalities to come up with a new way to solve that and starting this fiscal year, the member municipalities agreed to cover 100% of our local match mandate. They did so knowing that this would increase contributions to the member municipalities, but they wanted, um, to get rid of that anxiety and they wanted a predictable model of knowing approximately what their local match would be without big swings from, from exits of contracted municipalities. I also want to share that for years, the member municipalities tried to be a good neighbor and valued having the, the greater Belfont area be part of our public transit service area. The members tried hard not to get these municipalities to drop out. In many cases, the contracted municipalities knew this and to be honest, they took advantage of it. Belfont agreed to pay only minor increases in local match. Some years they refused to pay any increase in local match. These municipalities, to be honest, knew that the member municipalities would not let them leave and they relied on the member municipalities to subsidize local contributions to CADA. At the same time, elected officials in contracted municipalities continued to approve new growth through their approval of development and redevelopment plans. This created more demand. As a result, more vehicles had to be added to accommodate the increase in demand for public mobility in Belfont. How did CADA pay for this? Well, partially by increasing its deficit, which at the time was able to be covered through reserves and COVID relief funds. But CADA also maintained full service in Belfont by taking a scaffold to public transit in the center region. The first victim was Hafman Township in 2019, uh, when that route was entirely eliminated. And, um, I'll remind you, that wasn't just Hafman Township, that route also served the Patton Township, communities of Pantop, Wilderness, Ambleside, and the Buffalo Run Valley. Park Forest was cut in 2021. You probably remember me being here talking with you about that. And, um, thank you to the support of the board. Um, we had to get loud, but we got that, uh, service restored to Park Forest. And at that time, you remember me saying, you know, what, what is the, what is the benefit of being a member municipality? Other communities in the center region were not as fortunate as Park Forest. Hauser Grove, College Township, service cut. Pangrow Mills and West Ferguson Township, service cut. State College Borough, State College Borough is our, uh, highest population and the most densely populated and the most geographically small in the member municipalities. We should have perfect coverage in State College Borough. But yet there are, believe it or not, pockets of State College Borough that do not have adequate access to public transportation. Meanwhile, every square inch of Belfont Borough, I do mean that, every square inch, uh, has public access to CADA, not only just CADA, the door-to-door micro-transit CADA Go service. It's a premium service, it's like a public Uber. In the past couple of years, it's been paid for by the member municipalities. Another turning point came in 2022 when Harris Township threatened to drop out as a member municipality. Harris Township told CADA they were tired of seeing their local match go up, its service go down, and its local funds being used to subsidize Belfont. One Harris Township supervisor looked at what was happening with CADA and Belfont and came to the conclusion that Harris Township could drop out of CADA, rejoin as a contracted municipality, pay less, and likely see service levels increase. He was correct. He asked the same question I asked, what is the benefit of being a member municipality? The honest answer was there was no, there is no benefit, there was no benefit. And in fact, the, the member municipalities were kind of being financially penalized. With Belfont and the other contracted municipalities refusing to pay their cost recovery share as required in CADA's joint articles of agreement, the members continued to largely subsidize CADA's service in the greater Belfont area. Ultimately, we were able to convince Harris Township to stay in as a valued member municipality. They knew they would be appointing a new board member to CADA and agreed to a year of optimism, believing changes to the funding model would be made. Fortunately, we did get a new board member from Harris Township as well as board members from State College Borough and Ferguson Township. As you know, last year, we made some big changes on our CADA board that was soon filed by the welcoming of a new executive director and CEO. In fact, one of the very first things we did with the CADA new leadership was squash a plan that had been bubbling up in CADA to completely eliminate the Patton Township stretch of the W route. Um, when I heard about that, I called up Supervisor Rob. She said, "That is not going to happen." And I want to thank her and Amy, we were able to get some conversations go and, and stop that before, uh, that went into effect. About a year ago this time, the local municipal manager is meant to discuss local match for the current fiscal year. Belfont, Benner, and Spring all outright refused to pay any additional local contribution. Not one single dollar, and they, they did not. At this point, the member municipalities were done covering for Belfont and, and the contracted municipalities. Uh, CADA was also rapidly depleting its COVID relief funds and was facing real concerns about its fiscal stability going forward. As a reminder, if CADA operates at a deficit that can't be covered, the member municipalities are the ones on the hook to bail out CADA, not the contracted municipalities. Last year, the member municipalities agreed to be a good neighbor one final time and agreed to cover 100% of the increases for Belfont, Benner, and Spring. However, they also put the contracted municipalities on notice, they were done subsidizing them. When the time came to calculate rates for this upcoming fiscal year, the contracted municipalities, um, Spring and Benner refused to contribute any additional funds. Belfont offered an increase that represented under 3% of the operating deficit of providing service to Belfont Borough. Although at, the contracted municipalities were not given, uh, costs down to the exact cent, they were aware of the magnitude of the cost recovery they were expected to pay. Benner and Spring Townships knew they were looking at tens of thousands of dollars and Belfont Borough knew they were looking into six figures. Again, this was last July, not two months ago, as some people are claiming. As proof that these conversations took place, Spring Township supervisors immediately voted to provide CADA with their one-year notice to drop out of the system. Uh, Belfont and Benner did absolutely nothing between July and January. In September, you'll recall that I sent you a memo kind of alerting you that this situation was taking place and you may get some questions. I tried to give you the most accurate information I had at the time. After realizing, realizing that the member municipalities truly weren't going to subsidize the cost of providing service in the Belfont area, the contracted municipalities, uh, told CADA, um, they would not pay the amounts necessary to maintain the service levels they had. Uh, so CADA presented a, an alternate plan, a scaled-down service plan, uh, which is, uh, what is on the table now. That service model's, uh, four total hours a day of CADA Go-only service, two in the morning and two in the afternoon. Um, in the following weeks, we then began, began to hear the rumors that many of you heard. Uh, some of this was covered in the media, some of it was not. Uh, we heard that Belfont and Benner were considering dropping out of CADA, even though they did not provide us, uh, the year's notice required in the contract. We also heard Spring Township was reconsidering its decision to leave. We really needed answers as to what was happening with these municipalities. All three contracted municipalities had supervisory meetings scheduled for Monday, February 3rd. We were led to believe we would have a sense of their commitment to CADA after those meetings. We also agreed to hold our public hearing on service cuts on January 30th, allowing time for the public to comment and that feedback to be given to the supervisors and council members in those areas. On Friday afternoon, before these Monday meetings, uh, Belfont Borough began to play games and expressed it may not have a decision by that Monday. That's when I wrote an email to Belfont Borough, which I know some of you received copies of. Uh, and although the audience for that email was not intended to be public, we all know in the public sector, uh, any email has the potential to become public. Uh, I stand by my comments in that email and would have, uh, written the exact same thing, uh, even knowing that Belfont Borough would post that on their homepage, their, their Facebook and their next door, all of which they did. The tone of that email was necessary, it was not a first line of communication. Uh, I wrote that because quite frankly, uh, every other form of communication was not getting through. To address some of the specifics in that email, I expressed disappointment in the Belfont area residents, uh, that participated in the public hearing. Not all, but definitely a majority. I want to share, I was at the public hearing in Hafman Township a couple of years ago when we announced we would be, they would be losing CADA. Uh, while those residents were understandably frustrated and angry, their behavior was nothing like what I saw on January 30th in Belfont. If you haven't watched the public hearing, it's on CNET. I encourage you to watch the individual who shows up exactly at the one hour point in the video as a sample of what was encountered all night long. Now, you're all elected officials, you, you go through elections, um, you put yourself out there, uh, you know what you're getting into. You appoint me, um, I'm a volunteer, I know what I'm getting into. We had multiple CADA employees who were operating that public hearing. They're not elected officials, they are not political appointees, uh, they're professionals, they're doing their job. That public hearing was an extension of their workplace. They were on the clock. What they were subject to in that public hearing should not be tolerated in any workplace. As a person who technically sits at the top of the CADA pyramid, this happened on my watch. I found the behavior on display that night to be unacceptable. I'm not going to tolerate it, I'm going to call it out when I see it, and I will not apologize for that. Second, I mentioned that the residents in contracted municipalities were acting as if they are entitled to future CADA services. Again, they are not. CADA is there voluntarily. Center County Transportation is the only transit authority with a legal obligation to serve all of Center County, including the greater Belfont area. And if residents don't qualify for one of their senior citizen or ADA subsidies, Center County Transit will charge them fares ranging between $19.50 and up to $25.50 per trip. CADA public transit currently charges $2.20. Belfont Borough is fine with residents taking county transit and paying on subsidized fares where the rider pays the majority of the cost. It also appears to be fine with residents taking CADA with fare subsidized by center region municipalities. It refuses to pay for its own responsibility of providing public transit to its residents and businesses. Finally, as an appointed member of a board of a joint authority operating in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I have a legal fiduciary responsibility to act in the best interest of the authority's sponsor, Patton Township and the other member municipalities. This is the same type of legal fiduciary responsibility as you turning your retirement account over to a financial advisor and trusting they're doing what's in your best interest. As a fiduciary to CADA and its member municipalities, knowing that about two-thirds of CADA's total deficit, two-thirds, is tied up in providing service to these contracted municipalities, from a fiduciary standpoint, I have a hard time justifying offering any service in these areas. However, the fact that we are still trying to maintain service there, I think, is incredibly generous on the part of CADA and by extension, its member municipalities. However, that's not how we are being treated by Belfont. Last Monday, the Belfont Borough Council unanimously voted to send a formal letter to CADA telling us how displeased they are with us. That's my backstory, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, any board member would like to speak at this time? Supervisor McGruder, please.
I don't know what to say right now, I might let other people speak. But what, what world are we living in right now? Like, I am, it's, it's humorous, but it's appalling. And I could say it's humorous being removed from it. And I hate that you and the other CAD members were subjected to something like that. But this, this is appalling and I'll stop there. But I'm glad you're not apologizing. And I have more to say, so.
I know you do. Supervisor, you're supervisor?
No, just thank you for that explanation. I think, and it not only explains it to us, but I think officially explains it to the public, whether they tune in or not.
That was the goal.
It is here on record, yeah. Really appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate you coming, letting us know exactly the context and how everything went. As you said, this is years, so we have a lot of patience. It took you years to get to that email.
Elliot?
Just wondering how we can solve this problem. Is there any way to have some of the members of those municipalities contribute to the decision-making? That's not, I think you're doing that to begin with, but the public must not know it.
Yeah, there, there was a lot, not a lot of information shared with the public. Uh, we, we tried to be as transparent as possible at CADA and once we realized that, um, you know, we, we had a township vote to withdraw from CADA and did not communicate that to its residents, uh, we, in an effort of transparency, posted the formal letter from that township, as well as all of our communication with that township, on our website, you know, to do our job to let residents know what was happening. Um, those townships are represented by their municipal managers when they negotiate their contract with CADA, that is their voice. Um, and that's where we're trying to work through solutions, but, um, this is a, this is a funding issue and we honestly just, you know, they are getting service and we are asking, we're not making a profit, nobody's making any money. We're simply asking them to cover the cost of a service that they would like in their areas.
Supervisor McGruder?
Yeah, so, so I'm clear. Y'all don't have, CADA does not, is not responsible for providing services to Belfont, correct?
We're, we're legally obligated to serve our member municipalities. Uh, serving any other municipalities beyond that
Contracted.
Is contracted. And, uh, that's completely voluntary and we, we enter, you know, a contract arrangement we both sides agree to.
Okay. And so technically, it's not, they're not entitled to the services.
Correct.
They're not a member municipality, therefore they're not entitled to the services outside of those outlined in whatever contractual agreement that you have.
Correct. I mean, we have a contract right now and everybody's living up to that contract through the end of June. Uh, but there is, uh, it's completely voluntary whether we continue that after June and, you know, what they are willing to pay.
So right now, we have member municipalities who are contributing a lot of money to CADA And their services, our services have been getting cut over the years, despite us still acting in good faith in providing the monies that have been requested year over year.
Correct.
So while at the same time, our services, we have been paying, our services have been getting cut, member municipalities. These other, Belfont, for example, you're saying that all of their areas are covered?
But the, yes, they have the, the CADA Go service, which is
Door-to-door.
Transit, every square inch of Belfont Borough.
Center County is responsible for providing, uh, not Center County, well, countywide transportation, that is something that is available to individuals and there's stipulations on who that would cover for senior citizens amongst other individuals. For those who are not part of those groups, the rates you said are around 19, let's say $20
Correct.
Per trip. CADA's around $2, $2, $3 per tri- CADA is around two dollars, two, three dollars per trip.
Two-twenty, yes.
Two-twenty. So let's just say around eighteen dollars that individuals are saving per ride, and they're only saving that because they're being subsidized by member municipalities outside of Belfont.
Correct.
Whose services are getting cut over the years.
Yes.
Got it. And so when we, I don't want to pull up the definition of entitlement, but I don't think you were wrong in that. And so really, the Belfont Board have not really been acting in good faith throughout the years. I'll just make a statement. It doesn't seem like they've been acting in good faith. It seems like they haven't really been as transparent and clear with their constituents and why they're in a precarious situation right now. Two-thirds of the debt of CADA is tied to offering services to these non-member municipalities who have not been contributing the necessary funds to make y'all solve it.
If we were to stop all service to those three municipalities, our deficit would be cut by approximately two-thirds.
Okay. And so I have appreciated all the discussions we've had in this space about regional services and partnerships and collaborations. We've been, even recently, talking about making sure that we're continuing our partnerships, regional partnerships. The Board has expressed frustration with doing the right thing and being taken advantage of. And to me, this is just a prime example of that. We have individuals coming from Belfont that we're family with, friends with, coworkers with, and we want them to have access and accessibility to Patent Township amongst other things. It's mutually beneficial. And the fact that this vitriol and nonsense has been directed, misplaced, that's a problem for me. And it's sort of like, well, what in the hell are we doing? Why are we helping y'all? And so honestly, to Supervisor Abrams' point, I get that it's voluntary, like, y'all can make a decision whether or not you want to continue with this contracting with them in the future. I mean, if you need some backing from the members, I feel like it's really incumbent upon us to collectively give voice to like, we're not going to take this anymore of subsidizing something and then getting slapped on the back end. So I'm prepared to do whatever officially. I mean, it seems like Belfont voted on a letter or something like that of displeasure. Would be happy for us to vote on a letter of displeasure or something like that, too. And really, I think their representatives, Belfont, needs to be in front of us right now and in front of y'all's staff for CADA and apologizing for this nonsense. Yeah, and the last thing, which feels really icky to me, conspiracy theory, I'm like, how'd this letter get leaked and blah, blah, blah? So what I'm hearing, you don't have to confirm or deny, but it seems like Belfont representatives blasted this letter on their social media. And so it was misinformation to begin with, diffusion of responsibility, and then you blast it out there? To me, I don't know, I would never work with somebody like that because that shows me your morals, that shows me your values, and if y'all want to have a conversation, let's have a conversation. But honestly, I'm in favor of just let them go. But we need to do something.
We go way back.
Yes.
I'm a writer. I'm not one that sit back. I'm the one that rides CADA. And we've been going through this back and forth, how the other municipalities have taken on, you know, the responsibility. I listened to their board meeting, and I heard a young lady from the state plead with Belfont because she worked with incarcerated individuals that needed CADA to sign in, to get to work. And if they don't get CADA transportation, they will be sent back to jail. She pleaded about freedom of these individuals, and it didn't matter. I also watched today, and I know the media's picked up on this, the county explained why they didn't have the funding, but they're looking into coming up with an answer. Well, and I have to agree with my vice chair, the first answer is apologize to your staff that went through the nastiness of not having the truth, not being transparent. And second of all, I don't know whether we can do it, and I'm asking Betsy Dupree, are we stepping out of line if we write a letter on behalf of being a member of CADA that we know the importance of keeping CADA running, but not on the back of our municipality? So it won't come back to bite us in the butt? Okay, then I'm all for it if the board is with me that we write a letter on behalf stating our displeasure, the lack of transparency, what we have been footing the bill on as one of the municipalities, how we understand the importance of keeping it running, but that we don't have to, about good neighborship. I don't want to see, I don't want to see a senior not have transportation. I don't want to see a veteran not have transportation. I don't want to see an incarcerated person be sent back to jail because they can't get to their appointment, which is mandated by the state. I know it's not our responsibility, but maybe the letter and a little teeth behind it. I agree with my colleague. They need to apologize. They need to come upfront with their residents and tell the truth. This is over a year. This is not two weeks. And I agree with my colleague on trust. That letter was not addressed to the public, and how it got out made me angry that I can't even trust the board. My chair can't even trust their own members to come up with a solution, to come up with just talking about it, that you have to make a campaign on smearing CADA. And yeah, it was out there. It was out there, they were talking, and they didn't have the facts. That's why I asked you to come here tonight. The facts are now out there, and the ball is now in Belfont's court to tell the truth. I'm military, and I'll tell you right now, integrity means a lot. I can sit there for my chief of police, integrity means a lot. I can tell you, this board, integrity means a lot. So if you want to beat up on somebody, bring it on. Bring it on, because now-
Don't try it, because I'm gonna come out.
Bring it on, because now, not only did you discredit our representative from Patent Township, but a person with integrity. Mark, respect, you have my utmost respect for what your staff went through, but now you got a board backing you. So I say, bring it. I see you, Elliot.
There are so many times when I've thought of writing that kind of letter to somebody over something that happened and didn't. And I've never regretted not sending it, because what does it accomplish, other than making me feel better that I've unloaded something? It's terrible what has happened, but is there any way of solving this problem? For example, offering to have two or three of us meet with two or three of them, just have a discussion, could be public, or it could be a work session, and see if there's any common ground, bigger there isn't there? But I mean, if they feel this strongly about it, the chance of getting an apology out of a group like that is somewhere less than nil. And so what will we have accomplished?
Maybe the better, I'm sorry, maybe the better suggestion, having sat through the meetings over the last, what, year and a half that we've been discussing this, and when the decision was made, we were calling ourselves the Big Four, from the Big Four to subsidize the contract municipalities plus Harris Township, because at that time, Harris Township was very upset at not having as much service as Belfont, and Belfont wasn't a member municipality. But I think the suggestion, we reached out to the county. I called the county administrator and said, you need to do something, right? Because everywhere else in the state of Pennsylvania, these are county transit authorities. They're not organized around five or six municipalities. So he wrote back and said, well, we'll look into it, but we don't really have any money. I saw the Spring Township manager this morning at our monthly manager's breakfast, and I said, what is going on? Well, CADA's a business. I said, CADA's an authority. CADA isn't a business, and CADA has to operate under these archaic laws that the state has about how a transit authority has to operate. They can't charge five dollars to ride CADA GO, which is probably what they should be charging, because they have to charge the same fare they're charging on the bus.
Right.
So it's twofold, right? I don't, I don't know, I mean, I love the letter idea, but I don't know that it's going to be well-received, nor I don't think they're going to respond. But I think the better option is to go to the county and say, stop putting everything, because it's very clear in the sense that we got from the county when we tried to reach out to them back in the spring, was they don't want to help, they're fine with the member municipalities, which is the center region, taking on the subsidy. And that's not fair to the residents of the center region, right? So maybe the letter goes to the county commissioners and says, we've been doing this for so long, you guys need to figure this out, because we're not doing it anymore. And maybe the letter, there also needs to be a conversation with our state representatives saying, you need to fix your state transit laws so that state transit agencies, which they just put in the governor's budget to give them more money, and specifically to help SEPTA and the ones in Lehigh and the Northampton Counties, but help out all the transit authorities, give them more tools in the tool shed so that they can do microtransit and they can recoup some of their costs, and they're not doing it on the backs of their member municipalities. I, it's like a multi-pronged problem, and the local piece of it, the Belfont, Banner, Spring piece of it is big, but the regulatory piece of it, and then the county's role in it. I mean, if you go to Blair County, Amtran is run by the Blair County offices. If you go to Cambria County, same deal. You go down towards Lancaster, Lancaster County is Red Rose Transit, that's run by Lancaster. We're an anomaly in that we're not run by the county, and the county's taking advantage of the kindness of the residents of the center region who started this authority way back when. So that would be probably the better letter, and then to Elliot's point, requesting a meeting that the county commissioners come and sit and talk with everyone.
Amy, I like the suggestion, but I also want to see C. Belfont.
Yep.
We need Belfont in the mix. I like Elliot's suggestion on meeting, but I have a fear, if we can't trust them in a, just a regular board meeting, how can we trust them sitting down with us? Words are cheap, and we need action right now. I'm up for suggestion from the board right now. Ellie, Suton?
Go ahead.
Betsy, I'm sorry.
No, Suton, go ahead.
Uh, so yes, this is a multi-pronged, this requires a multi-pronged response. And Amy, I appreciate you talking about the higher systemic level challenges, and that's definitely some, a place that we need to be putting efforts. And in all this, what I'm, what I'm struggling with is that we're doing what we need to be doing. As Patent Township, we've been doing what we need to be doing. We've been making these systemic recommendations, and it seems like they've been falling on, they've been falling flat with the people who need to actually be taking this up and moving forward with it, Belfont. And so this is great, but I'm, I feel like we've gotten away from, there is a level of disrespect, and, for lack of a better word, disrespect, because this feels more abhorrent than that. Something happened, and I feel like that requires a response. The response of us just saying, well, let's shift our focus to the commissioners and the state, like, no, I feel like we need, this requires a response. And so, yes, I understand that maybe a letter they won't really receive well, that's fine. And our representative in CADA, we're put in a situation that is highly problematic, feels kind of volatile, especially with all the community members and what was happening with all that. Like, that requires a robust response, I feel like, from our board. And maybe, yes, I would love to get an apology, for y'all to get an apology, for us to get an apology, member municipalities. Let me not happen, but I still feel like some type of words needs to, needs to happen. It would be great if all the member municipalities could do that, but this was a violation, and it requires a response. I don't care how well they'll receive it or not.
Betsy?
I do think a response is appropriate, but it's been said before, we can't, we can't make them apologize. And I know one of the, one of the rules of parenting or teaching or whatever when you're interacting is never say anything that you're going to do that you can't really do or can't enforce, right? But what we can do is stand up and show our support and thank Mark for the support, for his professionalism and the persistence, so all in positive terms. And then at the end, say we regret that, not so much we regret that this has not been returned, but we regret that with a professional approach, we've not been able to solve this problem, and we're looking forward to solving that problem and hope that coming to the table will help us get there together. So taking a positive approach, and maybe expressing, start out by expressing some disappointment at some of the, at the way it was handled, which is a sort of gentleman's or gentleperson's way of saying, expressing distress and discontent. But what I don't want to get into is an escalation of these letters going back and forth, whereas...
I greatly appreciate the support of the board here tonight. I'm not looking for an apology from anybody. I do appreciate all the comments. The solution, we're simply trying to offer a public transit service, and we simply need to know how it's going to be paid for. And under our joint Articles of Authority, the language is pretty clear. So really, from my perspective, what needs to be reminded to the contract municipalities is that if they- is that if they want this service in their area, they need to budget for it and pay for it. Spring, now, Spring Township is out as of July. That's a done deal. Their supervisors had said that they were fine having the service when it was being subsidized by other townships, but now they have directly said they don't feel it's a service government should provide, they are out. So now we're down to Belfont and Benner. Benner, as you mentioned, the case, the county is really tied into Benner Township with the prison work release program. Also, if Benner Township should ever pull out, we do offer the CADA Commute Vanpool Program that is very popular with employees of the three prisons over there. We would not be able to offer that as a service to them. So, Benner Township is just as important as Belfont in trying to, you know, keep this as a service that links our communities.
Mark, can you send me that information with the Benner program?
Yes.
Okay. And has it, have you heard from any of our other municipalities that we are joined in? Have they had any input on hearing?
The member, the other member municipalities? None has asked, to my knowledge, none has asked for a public comment like tonight. I do know one of them has been discussing the situation with another member municipality. I don't know what the conversations are. To be honest, I try to leave that up to the other board members. Their relationship with their township is really, I think, their business, and I try to, you know, focus on Patton myself.
Suton?
I do want to take a step back, because the injured, affected party was really you and CADA, and me proposing solutions for what needs to happen makes takes the focus away from y'all. And so, I appreciate you coming back to what it is that you feel like at least you're needing, which is not necessarily an apology, but more so, you need a determination from their board and what they want to do moving forward. And so, yeah, at least I would encourage, maybe a letter is not necessary, but if they're watching, I would encourage y'all to give an answer. But I do think, you know, moving forward, if we have any input as member municipalities, for me personally, I don't want to continue subsidizing. And so, once it comes back to contract negotiations, it seems like as it stands right now, and I would be in support of not even offering to offer services to Belfont without them contributing anything.
So where we stand now is they have committed to pay for what we feel is a bare-bones minimum amount of service, which is the four hours a day, CADA-go service only. To be honest, I think the demand is going to exceed the capacity of what they can purchase in terms of number of vehicles on the road. And I think when this goes into effect July 1st, we're going to have a lot of angry CADA passengers. And we are trying our best to communicate what's going to happen July 1st. We're trying to communicate to Spring Township residents, they cannot ride the service at all. What we are asking of Belfont and Benner, you know, we're offering this as a one-year patch, this four hours of service. Imagine if there's only four hours of service here in Patton Township, on Viro Boulevard. Can you imagine that? So we're saying, this is a one-year temporary fix. If you want to be in CADA, you know, beyond 2025, July 2025, you have to work with us, you have to come up with the funding to increase the service level to meet the community demand in your municipality. That's really the message we are trying to get across to them.
And so I hope it is clear that, and y'all are making it clear, that this is what the board has agreed to pay for. This is the level of service that your board has committed to paying for. And if you want more, then your board has to approve that. So I hope there's transparency there.
Supervisor Abrams, go ahead.
Well, I think, one thing I think that our board can do is endorse what you're doing and support it as a positive thing. The next thing, though, is much more complicated, and I think the idea of offering to have meetings and discussions should come first before any other kind of letters or notes. Because when people get their backs up, they're not going to do something, and then they get a nasty letter, the chance of it being received positively or accomplishing is zero. So what's the only way that we can possibly get this fixed, be quite to talk it out? If they won't talk it out, then we don't have to waste our time with it.
And under the aegis of the county, it sounds like, under the direction of the county, in partnership.
Supervisor- Hold on.
One final thing.
Supervisor Abrams, okay.
You see the same thing happening at the national level. The Senate just passed this big bill to support all these different countries with more funding, and the House won't even bring it up. It's the same, it sounds exactly the same. But in some way, this has to get solved. And we can make jokes about it, like I'll say that they've solved the aging problem by forcing it to work its way through Congress, but that doesn't solve anything either. So I think the first thing is we want to support Mark, and the second thing is, let's see what we can do discussion-wise.
Supervisor Whitman, did you have something?
Oh, no. That's essentially why I said-
I'm going to go back, and Betsy would bear with me, and Mark. Remember when we were trying to get transportation for top trees? And John was chair, and he was cutting some services out of Patton, and we needed to write him a letter. We wrote CADA a letter.
For Park Forest.
For Park Forest.
Yeah, correct.
And I do remember our former chair and supervisor, Dan Trevino, put together a letter from this board that was generally, but it had some teeth. And we brought John and some board members here, so we could discuss that, the letter that went out, the comments that were made. And I think through the letter with some teeth, but diplomatically, we were able to resolve some of that issue, if I'm not mistaken. But it came through the letter with some teeth diplomatically, but it had some language in there. And then we invited them here, and it got resolved, because we weren't going back and forth at each other. We made our statement, it was very polite, very respectful, but we were able to resolve it and move it along. If I'm not mistaken, am I not correct on that?
Yeah, I think it was a very professional and appropriate letter the township sent to the CADA board at the time. And it made all of our board members aware that Patton Township is upset, and it means business, and it's a member municipality, and it expects to be treated as one. Yes.
Supervisor-
Last thing I'll say on this, I get the regional implications for some things that y'all have been trying to make moves on, but this is not actually an issue that we need to solve. This is not our issue. And so I get coming together and talking through things and trying to plan out how to move forward, like, we don't have an issue. My angst is just the process and the ways in which y'all were treated. And again, I don't, we don't need to sit down with them for anything at this point, because again, we don't have an issue. This is their issue. So I just wanted to make clear that. I was clear in that, in that.
Patton Township has been 100% supportive of CADA, and I've always appreciated that from all of you.
So, at this point, what would the board suggest? That we format a letter to go out?
No, we weren't talking about a letter.
I agree with what everyone was saying, like, we don't need a letter.
Okay, no letter?
They don't need a, they don't need a letter.
Yeah, Mark doesn't need it. But that we reach out, or maybe have Amy, our manager, pursue a conversation at the county level, would that be appropriate?
Yeah, so tomorrow, we've been meeting monthly with CADA to talk about, it started out as the local match meetings, which have been going on for 18 months, but now we talk about service and other issues. So we're going to talk about this tomorrow morning briefly, and it's the municipal managers that are there. So what I could do is tell them the nature of the conversation that you all had this evening, and suggest that they have similar conversations, and that maybe what we want to do with CADA, you know, jointly, is through our members on the CADA board, try to have a conversation with the county. And maybe if we can send a letter and a communication signed by the chair of every board of the member municipalities, right, maybe that carries a little more weight than coming from the staff level, and perhaps we'll get the commissioners. We could offer to host it here in Patton Township, but perhaps we get the commissioners to at least come to the table and talk. And that's maybe the first step, because it's, Suton's right, it's not our problem to solve. Belfont's cutting off their nose to spite their face at this point, and Patton Township's got to do what's right for Patton Township, and CADA members have to do what's right for CADA, but it doesn't mean we can't stop trying to make some inroads, right, and just do it through a different avenue. So I can absolutely bring up the discussion at our meeting tomorrow, this was actually on the agenda anyway for the meeting, so, you know, and just encourage everyone to have a similar conversation with their elected bodies, and then talk about, do we reach out to the county collectively? You know, have the board chair of every municipality sign that letter and say, "We want to have a meeting to talk about this."
What's board's pleasure on this?
What Amy said.
You said, "Okay"?
Yeah. I think it is a county issue. I think there are other areas in Center County that need service, and to have just these certain areas get it seems, just, is not logical.
Okay, so, the board's pleasure is that Amy bring, update, update us, but bring it up at your meeting tomorrow.
Yep.
And please, Mark, know that this board supports you. You know, if I'm speaking out of line to my board, please let me know. But I want, before Mark leaves here tonight, that the Patton Township board supports him and CADA as you're moving forward on this, because we are connected, we are part of that membership. So we do get to have a say something.
And I want to be clear for people, my, me getting on my soapbox and I need to get off of it, but was really in response to the treatment that you received, and my disappointment in the board and Belfont leadership for allowing that to happen based on the action and inaction over an extended period of time. And so, my animus is not toward Belfont residents. Again, I have people in Belfont connected with them. I'm in favor and support of supporting them as Patton Township in whatever ways we can, and it seems like we have been doing that over the years. And at this point, it seems like, for me at least, I just want people to come part of the way, and it doesn't really seem like the leadership there has been doing that. So, again, I just don't want to get it twisted, like, I don't have any animus toward Belfont residents or anything like that. The leadership is the ones I'm disappointed in, based on the position in which they put y'all in. And I would hope that as our board, if we, the roles were reversed, I would hope that our board would never put one of our, put other entities in that position. And, yeah, I'll just stop there.
Elliot?
I agree with having Amy start this conversation, and point out that there probably are many, there are several different ways that this could be done, and we don't, and we don't, we're not dictating what that should be. But it needs to unfold, and I do think we want a resolution of some sort, supporting Mark and CADA. It's very simple that we support what they're doing, and not pass any judgment on anyone else. Now, we'll see what the reaction is. Hopefully, people can start coming together, because that's going to be the only way that this gets solved, actually. And we wanted to, the people that are most affected are actually not the elected officials, they're the people that provide the transit.
It never is.
And, you know, some of them may not be willing to speak up for one reason or another, or they're not used to it. But they're the ones being adversely affected, and that's who we have to, we deserve everybody.
Mark, I want to thank you for coming in, and it's called transparency. So thanks for taking the time out, and know that this board is in support and supporting you.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation to come and share the information with you, and I will be sure to keep you and Amy updated as things develop.
Okay, thank you. Thank the board. Next on the agenda, I'm trying to get you guys out of here for Valentine's Day, the little part of it. But moving right along is the public safety, year-end report, Chief Jolly.
All right, thank you very much. I did include a copy of my '23 year-end report, and '23 is a very busy year in the police department, and I'm going to try to summarize it in about 10 minutes. So, we'll move right through this. But just for anybody who doesn't know, the composition of our agency, we have 20 patrol officers and two police secretaries. So we have my position, three sergeants, 13 patrol officers, and three detectives. The department also employs a part-time ordinance enforcement officer and two part-time crossing guards. One of our detectives' primary duties is narcotics investigation. In '23, he opened up, along with the Center County Drug Task Force, about 27 drug delivery cases. So that was targeting individuals who were selling drugs in the center region specifically. And during '23, the task force seized multiple pounds of crystal methamphetamine, multiple grams of heroin and fentanyl, and other drugs. They also seized about $22,000 in currency directly related to the sale and distribution of narcotics in our area. '23 saw a culmination of a very significant case. We started talking about this back in 2021. That's how long some of these investigations go for. But there was an arrest of seven individuals, and it disrupted a pipeline of drug activities directly from the city of Philadelphia, right directly in Tar Region here in the center region. So just another display of how, at a municipal level, we work with our state partners very well, and all across the Commonwealth, really work well together. A great deal of our emphasis continues to be on training. I'm very proactive with training. If an officer's interested in it, we try to get them to anything I can get them to, based on our budget and also the availability. There is training that is required by MOPAC, or the Municipal Police Officers Training Commission. We'll talk about that just in a moment. Just a couple examples of some of the trainings that officers attended. We had crisis intervention team training, firearms training, crisis negotiator training, and de-escalation strategies, just to name a few. There's a long list in the report here of things that we accomplished. Very proud, in 2022, Patton Township spearheaded a, basically the composition of an accident reconstruction team for the center region. We noticed there was a lot of serious crashes, that we had a need for this. Officer Eliza Vardzel and Officer Katie Salead went through the training to be accident reconstructionists. It's about a six-week course, so it's very intensive, a lot of training. But in 2023, that accident reconstruction team here regionally was utilized for 15 crashes total in Center County. And just for Patton Township, we used that team on two serious crashes that we had in our township. We once again received grant money from the state for buckle-up and aggressive driving. During those details, we wrote about 175 citations- During those details, we wrote about 175 citations, made a DUI arrest, and two arrests for minors law, and two for public drunkenness. Our officers, again, were trained in the use of naloxone, which is the medication, when administered via nasal spray can reverse the, the effects of an opioid drug overdose, and we did administer that two times. So, that's actually down from about six times that we did the previous year, so it's good to see that trending on the down. Again, our officers do numerous passenger, child passenger safety seat inspections. We have three officers who are certified as technicians. Our officers were certified in and carry tasers, although I'm happy to report that we had no taser deployments in 2023. We do have one officer who is trained as a drug recognition expert, he's also an instructor for that as well. He did four DRE evaluations of impaired drivers in 2023. We're seeing a lot more officers getting that training, and that's a very intensive training as well. So, his workload's kind of getting spread out a little bit more, so that's, that's good to see. Our 21st Annual Patent Township Police Department Safety Fair was a huge success. It was a fantastic, beautiful day that day, and we had a great, great turnout. The Happy Valley Business Association, kudos to them, they always assist with the planning, advertising, and volunteering at this event, so, we have a fantastic relationship with them, and, and really rely on them for their assistance for that event to make it such a big success. Mark your calendars, September 14th is when we're looking for 2024. So, it's tentative right now, but that's what we're looking sometime in September, it's in a way Penn State game, so, we'll hopefully be able to have a, a good day for that as well. We continue to be the home of a drug take-back box. We continue to see large amounts of unused and unwanted medications. In 2023, we collected 285 pounds, up from the 280 that we collected in 2022. We hired two new officers, Officer Michael Adolini and Officer Tyler Borowski, who were introduced to the board here. And it was, '23 was the fifth year of our officers wearing our body-worn cameras. Technology's great, it's improved vastly, so part of our CIP for 2024 is to replace that technology. The cameras in our cars are about 10 years old, and as I mentioned, the body cameras are about five years old, many, many improvements, so, that's one of the projects that we have with some assistance from grant money that we receive to, to accomplish that this year, coming up. Calls for service, we saw an increase, about 200 calls from 5,466 in '22 up to 5,677 in '23. Accidents unfortunately rose a little bit, so we had 352 in '23, that's up from the 338 that we handled in '22. However, serious accidents, so accidents involving injury, or where a vehicle needed to be towed from the scene, decreased. From, in 2022, we had 105, in 2023, we saw 74. Over half of our serious crashes are on the North Atherton Street Corridor and Waddle Road. Those two roads account for most of our serious crashes, so we had 23 on Atherton and 19 on Waddle Road. I can't say enough, I had a conversation with Amy a little bit earlier today, how proud I am of our agency. We have a fantastic police department, truly, you know, the officers are, are the heroes, they're the ones that are out there doing the hard work, our patrol is the backbone of our agency. But we have great detectives, we have great secretaries, we have great crossing guards, we have a great enforcement officer who make me look good. I, I, I mean, honestly, without them, you know, we couldn't have the fantastic reports that we give you each month, and, and the community engagement that we have. So, I'm, I'm just extremely proud of our agency, very, very pleased and always happy to say that I'm a member of the Patent Township Police Department, it truly does mean a lot to me. So, again, kudos to them, the, the staff and, and the officers just do a fantastic job for the community. Next, I did include, a few years ago we started this, our annual in-service training. So, like I mentioned, there is some training that is mandatory, the officers have to go through, so in 2023, the MOPAC required, on the left there, the top-left block, we had legal updates, which talks a lot about case law, any changes to legislation for vehicle code or the crimes code, tactical communications, criminal investigations, and officer wellness. We've been putting a lot of work into officer wellness over the last couple of years, so it's been a very big focus, and the state also recognized that, so all officers in the state in '23 received training on that. And some of the electives that we did, cellphone forensics, talked about mental health, the district attorney's office came in and talked about case law, bloodborne pathogens, infectious disease, hazardous materials, community conferencing, use of force, including taser and baton, and critical policy review, generally use of force and pursuit policy are the, the two main ones we discussed there, so. But I've included the whole way back to 2014, I believe, so you can take a look through, if you want to see all the training that our officers have received for about the last 10 years. And then lastly, I have our calls for service and use of force, I started doing this a couple of years ago as well, just a breakdown of, kind of, the force that were used in, in the incidents with our officers. Again, we had 5,677 calls for service, our officers also conducted 1,832 traffic stops, and we, as a department, made 461 arrests, so about 8% of our calls for service resulted in an arrest. But out of the 7,500 contacts there with the public, we only used force during 10 of those interactions. So, a very, very obviously small number there. It did list some of the types of force that officers could use, escort, OC spray, taser, control compliance, unarmed striking, striking implement, a beanbag, or deadly, or potentially deadly force. And we'll get into control and compliance if you just want to take note of that, because all 10 of them involved control and compliance, which is leverage, take-downs, holes, and come-alongs. But total use of force by, incidents by race, out of the 10, eight were individuals were white, one African-American and one Asian. By gender, seven were male, three were female. By race and gender, five were white male, three were white female, one was African-American male, and one was Asian male. Again, all 10 involve control and compliance. And then lastly, on the last slide or last screen, de-escalation, I added this in last year. So, out of the 10 use-of-force incidents, our officers were able to, often, use-of-force springs on you, and you don't have maybe time to de, to try de-escalation tactics, so in eight of the 10, they did attempt them. Verbal de-escalation was noted, was used in all eight attempts. Officers, very subjectively but considered, there is a block that they check on the use-of-force report, they considered de-escalation tactics to be effective in one of the eight, where they were able to use de-escalation tactics. However, some of the other ones they used besides verbal were waiting for a backup officer, just, again, giving more time, repositioning, putting a barrier between themselves and the subject, or to completely disengage, just, you know, to, to move back in, in way and to kind of reanalyze the situation. There were no reports of injury to the individuals on, on whom force was used. We did have one incident where two officers were injured, one was punched in the face and one was kicked on, on an incident. And then, lastly, we did not investigate or receive any complaints related to use of force in 2023. So, that completes my quick overview of our, our 2023. Again, departments to be commended, they've done a fantastic job, and really care about the community we serve, so.
Okay, any comment from Supervisor Abraham?
I hear you're talking about de-escalation, maybe we should use some of those techniques to solve our transit problems. Although it's a different thing, but it's the same idea.
Just a reminder, we don't have any problems.
Supervisor Whitman. Yeah, um, okay, let's take a five-minute break. Okay?
I guess I'll talk after the break.
Yeah, sorry about that. Your mic, your mic's a lot. We're back, back on Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah, so I just want to publicly acknowledge the good deeds and good work of the police department, especially, which shows up in your annual report, your, your focus on de-escalation, and your, the attention that you give to any kind of use of force, and whether you have or haven't done that. But the fact that you consistently report on that shows me that you have established, and/or grown, a culture of deflecting whenever possible. And I think that speaks highly of you as a leader.
There you go.
And not as a boss, I think that's a very different thing, and, and obviously of your force. And then, I also wanted to ask you about active shooter training, given that this is the anniversary of the Sandy Hook, and I, you hear again and again, I heard a lot today, of officers not having that training in active shooter, active shooter training, but I did notice that it was one of the trainings that you've gotten, and I, I also, reading some of the accounts, realized the danger that each officer puts himself or herself in dealing with an active shooter. So, if you could just address that.
Yeah, um, so, I'll start with that, and then I want to address your first point too, but, so, the active shooter training, absolutely, we actually, there, there's a lot of, of federal grants to pay for the training, just because of how important it is to, to, across our nation. And we have schools in our, in our jurisdiction, clearly, and we're blessed to have a school resource officer, so we have somebody that's in the schools that, you know, could, could take care of a situation like that, should it arise very quickly, hopefully. We, we have sent multiple officers, so we have multiple, actually, active shooter instructors.
Yeah.
So, they've been through, like, ALIS training, so different trainings like that. Again, the Run Height Fight training that we use, deals with active shooter. So, they've been to solo response to active shooters, so there's, there's actually many different types. We just sent, one of our younger officers, actually in '23, was one of the ones he sent, so, the solo. So, it's literally, you know, there's an acronym for what the training stands for, but it's literally a solo officer response to an active shooter situation. So, we are lucky in that we have multiple officers within our agency who are trained in active shooter instructor, and so they can impart their knowledge and also train other officers while we do, when we have the opportunity at the range or different situations where we have training, so. So, we, we're blessed, again, that we have many different people who can, can accomplish that goal and give us the training, so.
Thank you.
And then to your first point, I've said it before, but I think all police officers really are expert de-escalators. Truly, that's our job. You know, we, generally, people don't call us to say, hey, I'm just having a really good day, so, no need to come, you know. They, they call us because there's conflict, they're having problems with their neighbor, they're in a fight with their, you know, boyfriend, whatever the case may be. So, we, I, in my opinion, we're professional de-escalators. We get to a situation and, and resolve a conflict, and the very first thing, you know, you can't do that when people are yelling and screaming at each other, you have to get, ease it down, get party separated, things like that. So, truly, we do it every day, so, but it's still important to, to get training and, and receive training on sharpening those skills whenever we can.
Well, I still say it's, it's not the universal story in, looking at the news reports across the nation and all around the world, so, kudos to you and whoever else is doing it, you're our force, you collectively, y'all, okay?
I would also like to piggyback on, it was like Supervisor Whitman took the words right out of my mouth as far as leadership. It starts at the top, chief, and you continue with all of your officers, and I want to thank them for coming out to the appreciation dinner, and all that they do. Each and every time we do a report, we're praising our officers for the outstanding jobs that they do, and continue to do, and it starts at the top. And the, the officers that the board chooses to be on Patent Township shows the integrity and who they are as individuals. And I, I'm, I can say for myself, I am very pleased with all of the, every last one of them, you know, and the staff, and our staff, so, thank you. Now, on the active shooter piece, I know as we're moving into getting a new executive director for COG, I know I brought it up once before, the training for the protection of the officials. I don't know where that is, as Eric is moving out, can we get with the Chief of Ferguson and get some training for, not only for our veteran board members, but for our newly-elected officials? As we get ready, as we're sitting in our general forum, as we're sitting in our committee meetings, we need to know what to do in case of. So, if we could just find out where we're at, I appreciate that.
I am happy to reach out to Ferguson, to Chief Petrick. I know Sergeant Ryan Hendrick does the exact same training that Officer Brad Tuskovich does, Run Height Fight can be applied to a school, to a business, to religious, so, yeah, absolutely, we'd be happy to, to provide the training to anyone.
Thank you.
Anytime, literally, anybody who calls us, we make arrangements to make sure that we get it. It can be to two people who work in a company, up to a company that has 500 employees, doesn't matter, we, we're happy to provide it.
Okay, I would really like to make sure our board is a part of that training, especially for that general, general forum, and even for us here. But for the general forum, it's imperative we have that training.
Absolutely, I'll make that mention.
So, thank you.
Yep, sure.
Any other comments for chief? Next on the agenda is the proposed amendment for the collective bargaining agreement with the Patent Township Professional with the Patent Township Professional Police Officers Association.
Okay, you don't mind, I'll take this one since it was needed. Because I have a good contract, as you know, with the union. The union approached me in late 2023 that they had a desire to take the second and third shift and change their hours from five, eight-hour days a week to four, 10-hour days. Okay, so that does not affect the first shift officers. The daylight officers will remain on five, eight-hour days. So this, you know, if everybody changed, it would be easy to change the contract. Because we're just changing two of the three shifts, it caused us to think a little bit outside the box on how we were going to write the language in the contract. So I met with Betsy DePuis's colleague, Steve Sable, who's our, our, Steve Corble, right?
Yes.
Steve Corble, Steve Sable's the guy that did the NFL films. Steve Corble, who is our attorney that helps with the negotiations. Him and I met, actually, while I was in Denver. We had a Zoom meeting, because I didn't want to push this off any later than I had to. I wanted to get it resolved. We came up with this memorandum of understanding with the changing of the language. I just want to stress that it does not change any of the benefits that anybody gets. You're still going to get overtime. It's just that overtime has to now be calculated on a two-week basis as opposed to a one-week basis because of the way that the days work out. Sometimes they might work more than 40 hours in a week, but they'll never, they'll never work more than 80 hours in two weeks where they don't get paid overtime. Okay? So we had to adjust for that, we had to adjust for vacation days because things said days as opposed to hours. We moved some things around. So the end result is the draft of the MOU that was included with the, with the agenda. So if anybody has any questions about that draft, I'll be happy to answer them. If you don't, I would request that the board, if they're comfortable, to make a motion to approve that and sign that. We'll have the union sign it, the union has already approved it, actually. We'll get that to sign in the memorandum of understanding. We'll go into effect with their next schedules that come up.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Whitman?
Oh, well, I was trying to do it. I was just going to move that we approve the proposed amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the Patent Township Professional Police Officers Association.
Okay, is there a second? Supervisor Eber?
Second.
All right, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Aye, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And for the record, the presentation was from our Finance Director, Larry Pager. All right, next on the agenda is the Police Sergeant Selection List.
Yep, and I'll take that one. So with our agency getting much younger, some of the order officers have an opportunity to, they bid and to pick their shifts. We had a sergeant who was our midnight sergeant, who has been with us for about 17 and a half years, working midnights. He expressed a desire and preference to work daylight. And as a result, he, we already have a daylight sergeant and supervisor, so unfortunately, he had to make the decision, if he wanted to go to daylight, then he would have to give up his supervisor position. So after discussion with his family, they decided that would be best. 17 and a half years on midnights is a long time. So we appreciated his service on nights. But that, that discussion and his decision prompted us to have to start a sergeant selection exam. So we had three officers who were interested and put in for it. They went through a written examination. Then they also went through an oral board. And I have before you this evening the final certified list ranking the three officers. Officer Brian Schaefer was first with a score of 85.65. Officer Elijah Varzal was second with a score of 84.1. And Officer Central Suho was ranked third with a score of 78.75. So we do currently have an opening for a sergeant. We need a sergeant on the midnight shift. So I'm just asking that you consider action to accept this list. And then, once that is completed, then the manager and I will make appointments from the list, starting with the highest-ranked candidate.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the 2024 Police Sergeant Selection List?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion? Supervisor Sutin McGruder?
So the scores already came from a written?
A written exam and an oral exam. Yeah, they had an oral board where they sat in front.
And does anything else, like body of work, come into play when making this selection? Or just those two?
Just those two things pretty much encompass the scores that you see here, so, yeah.
Can I ask why?
That's been our process. That's just the way that we have done it. I, you know what, I did fail in the neglect, I did. There are preference points as a part of that as well. I have a zero to 10 that would encompass body of work, different things like that, that I added on to them.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you, Chief. All right, next on the agenda is public work, operations, there are no items. Next is engineering, planning, and zoning. The Planning Commission Report. Is that Miss Commissioner Ellen?
Yeah, she's not here this evening, so I will ask her to come to your next meeting to provide that report to you, if that's okay.
That's fine. Next on the agenda is administration, update for solar power purchasing agreement. And that is Director of Finance and Administration, Larry Pager.
Uh, yes, thank you. And happy Valentine's Day to all the ladies.
What was that?
My father told me that Valentine's Day is a holiday for the girls. That's why he gave gifts to my sisters and never gave gifts.
See, this is, this is the problem with the world.
I'm still living through the trauma. So, as you know, way back in 2018, we started a project to build a solar array. And for this, for us, at that time, I think it was about 17 different organizations in the center region, and outside the center region, actually. Over time, that has whittled itself down to now we have 12. We have worked on this, and I have been there since before it was called the SPPA Committee, when it was just me and a couple other B E counters, all talking about how we could make this work. So where we stand now, I'm going to talk about where we stand now, what's coming up, what we have to do. So I'm going to go through this presentation, which was given to the Facilities Committee. We also gave a slightly different one to the Finance Committee, but this one is the one we gave to the Facilities Committee, so I can tell you where we stand and answer any questions that anyone might have. So, I can't get it to move. We'll try it again. Yeah, but it's not going to show on your screen. Okay, so it's not going to show here. Okay, so the, the purchase pirate agreement, and what it is, is we are up at the top, the buyers. We're having a developer who's going to go out there and he's going to build an array, a solar array. It's 22 megawatt AC, 14 megawatts DC, okay? So they're going to, they're going to build that. They're going to provide us with 22 megawatts worth of electricity at a fixed rate with an escalator of 1.5% per year. Anything additional electricity that we may need outside of that, we would just buy from West Penn Power, like we did now. Okay? This goes back to the fall of 2018, when I had the initial discussions. This is everything that we did in the process. Where we are now is we have negotiated contracts with the developer and with the retail supplier. And the contracts right now are in what I think, I call, the position where now our solicitors have to negotiate what's best for us. Okay? So we go on an overall contract, but I wouldn't recommend we sign any contracts until our solicitor is in agreement that she recommends that we sign those contracts. Okay? And we'll talk about where that sits based on our meeting this morning with the SPPA. Okay, these are the 12 organizations. As you can see, Patent Township is at 1.4% of this total project. We're not a big portion at 1.4%. If we decide that we don't want to sign it, it's not going to be the end of this solar project by any means. If State College Area School District at 54% decides they aren't going to sign the contracts, we don't have to worry about whether we're signing those contracts or not, because the project will be done. Okay, so the agreement structure is that Prospect 14 is the developer. They're going to build this array. It's tentatively, I'm going to say, set to be built in Walker Township, okay? They have an agreement with Walker Township on a conditional use of the land. It's going to be built in Walker Township. And the price is fixed, like I said, with a 1.5% escalator. On the retailer side, we need a retailer for any electricity that we may need to buy. And if we build, we use more electricity, we're not going to get more out of this solar array. We're going to have to buy it off the retailer. Plus, the retailer's going to provide us with electricity in the times when the solar array is not generating electricity. So obviously, a solar array is not going to generate electricity at night, because there's no sun. It will start generating again the next morning when the sun comes up. It also will not generate electricity if, like Tuesday, it's covered in snow. It's not going to generate electricity. So there's times when it will generate electricity. There's times when it will generate more electricity than we need. All that electricity is going to settle on, through the retailer. As the, do we sell the excess electricity we're generating? Do we buy the electricity that we need that it's not generating? So that's all going to be taken care of by the retailer. These are the five contracts that the PPA is going to encompass it. There's going to be a master agreement with Direct Energy, and a transaction confirmation with Direct Energy. There's going to be a PPA service agreement with Direct Energy. We have an agreement that the three parties are all going to work together. And we have the PPA master agreement with the developer. Okay, so then, we have a sixth agreement that we're talking about signing. And this is after we get it up and running, okay? Currently, we have, we, as meaning Patent Township, has an electricity broker that we deal with, okay? They go out, if we sign a contract, the last time we signed a contract was for a year, 18 months, to get us through to when the solar's coming on. But they also monitor that to make sure that everything that the supplier says that they were going to do in this contract, that they're doing. I don't have to check it. I have this broker part of the things that we pay her for, pay them for, is to monitor that. When we go with Prospect 14, we lose that ability. So we have two choices. One choice is Larry Pager could spend hours every month going over what's going to be an increasingly complex electric bill, okay? Yeah, I've got plenty of time I could do that. Or we've asked Greed Sky, the consultant that we used during this whole process, what would cost for them to do that for all 12 organizations? So that cost is $42,000 a year, which will be split among the 12, which of course, we would pay 1.4% of that, just under 600 bucks a year.
What do we do currently? Our current broker?
Yeah, currently, it's hard to tell because it's built into the cost. So we don't really, so now we're going to break that cost line, and this is going to be less than 2/10 of a cent per kilowatt hour. It's really a small amount. I recommend, on a contract, if we decide to go ahead and sign this on a 15-year contract, I recommend that this service is well worth what we would pay for it. Okay, so the process, as we talked about, is the electricity's going to be generated by the, by the solar array. It's going to go into the grid. The retailer is going to pay the producer for the electricity. The retailer's going to charge us for that electricity. We're going to pay Direct Energy, who is the retailer, okay? Currently, like I said, we have an electricity contract. I think ours is, it's one year, 18 months. I didn't change what the savings or the costs were, but our costs are relatively the same, less than a half percent of our total budget. In the future, with a fixed rate of electricity for 15 years, we'll get invoiced monthly, but we'll have an invoice from West Penn Power and an invoice from Greed Sky for the broker fees, whereas right now, it's built, the broker's fees built into our electricity cost. Here is the cost. So the PPA rate for solar in year one is 4.59 cents, 4.6 cents per kilowatt hour. Okay? In year 10, with the escalator, it would increase to 5.25 cents per kilowatt hour. And in year 15, it would be 5.65 cents per kilowatt hour. The fees, which include that $42,000 that I was talking about, also includes the fees that Direct Energy... that Direct Energy is going to charge us to do all of the services that they're providing is about 2 cents a kilowatt hour. Then we get the settlement, okay? What is the settlement? The settlement can vary, can be plus or minus 5%. The settlement is we are generating electricity now in the solar array, okay? Every time that goes onto the grid, okay, electricity price is varying every hour. So it's either going onto the grid at a higher price than what electricity is selling for, or a lower price than electricity is selling for, okay? So when we finally get to the end, there's this settlement of, did we make money on our excess electricity? Did we lose money on our excess electricity? And that's what that settlement is, okay? So there's a little bit of a settlement, plus or minus 5% of our loss.
Is that an annual?
That is a monthly.
Monthly, thank you.
It will be, there will be a settlement, well, I take that back.
A bit of constant.
It's ending. They'll look at that at the end of the year, and they'll set that settlement for the coming year.
Okay.
Okay, so they'll true up in essence at the end of the year.
Yeah, so, and they're monitoring it constantly?
They're monitoring it constantly. That's what we're paying Greed Sky to do.
Right, tell me, they're using calculus. Yep, I knew it. It's the only time in my life, I'm, do I know calculus?
So that's what Greed Sky's going to do, tell us, is monitor that to make sure really that that settlement is correct.
Cool.
Okay, so on this graph, you can see the top blue solid line is what the market is expected to do. Of course, nobody knows truly what's going to happen to the market. This is based on past experience of the market, okay? And as you know, past experience does not guarantee future events. But in essence, over time, electricity has increased. We've had some drops, like during the pandemic, electricity costs dropped substantially, but then it went way up after the pandemic was over. So dropped from 5 cents to 2 cents during the pandemic, and then went up to 10 cents after the pandemic was over. So you have those variations, but over time, it kind of increases. The dashed line that goes on for 15 years and it drops off in 2040, that's the rate that we're getting for the PPA, 4.5 cents with a 1.5% escalator, okay? The gray line is our PPA price plus or minus the settlement. So it's our average bill rate. It's what we're going to be paying for electricity in reality. And you can see that that is below or close to the market rate. And even if the market rate drops down below our PPA price, the settlement will kind of bring our price back to where the market rate is. So I think at where we're at, that we're at a good point where we will be close to market. We're not going to, we're not going to be at a point where, when I started this project in 2018, they were talking about a PPA rate that was in the 6.5 cents range. If we had a PPA rate that was at the 6.5 cent range, we would have a harder time getting to market rate or below, okay?
What's the, why does the dashed line drop?
Because that's when the contract ends. So when the contract ends, we don't have the solar power anymore. We're only buying it for 15 years.
Okay, and we'll deal with that later.
It drops off, and our average bill rate becomes the market rate as we find out the market.
Yeah, got you.
Okay?
Thank you.
We don't have to stop and file candles.
So there is a potential for savings, and we are very close to what the Water Authority, we use a lot less kilowatts than they do. But the 7.3 cents is what they're paying to their broker. So that between, that and a settlement on the high range of 6.9, they're looking at an annual savings of about $22,000. Ours will be probably annual savings of around $2,000, okay? That's on the high portion. On the low part of the settlement, they're looking at a $46,000 savings. The whole project for all 12, the savings should be between $124,000 and $263,000 per year. So we would be 1.4% of that, okay? These are the project costs. So we paid 1.4% of the $234,725. Once we hit certain milestones, Prospect 14 will pay us back $60,000. So the total project is $174,725. If you compare that to $124,000, the payback's about 18 months. Could be less than a year or up to 18 months, about nine months to 18 months. And also, we're going to be part of a solar project that's helping to diversify the Pennsylvania electric grid. So this is going to be an equivalent to 3,823 homes electricity use for one year. So the next steps, the next steps are, we have sent out the contracts. I think we put a link where you can get the contracts. February, we're discussing these contracts in our meetings, which is what we're doing now. We, if, any comments that you guys have, we'll send back to the SPPA this week to get back to them. I changed the wording in our meeting this morning to say, instead of March and April, it's March-ish and April-ish. So we're kind of, because I don't think we're going to be able to do it exactly because of the way everybody's boards and councils meetings fall. But we're hoping that in March-ish, we can approve contracts. In April, sometime we'll award contracts. I say that knowing that this morning, we got into the discussion about these contracts. One of the things that came up in the meeting on January 24th that really surprised me, this is not what I expected, and that was, oh, we issued these contracts, and now the solicitors don't have the ability to change anything in that contract. Take it or leave it. That's not what the last four years of my life I have been told, okay? What I have been told is, they were going to hash out these contracts, then we were going to send it to our individual solicitors, and our individual solicitors were going to be able to look at those contracts, and if something doesn't agree with, or is not acceptable by Patent Township and Patent Township's solicitor, that we weren't going to sign that contract, okay? That was my understanding. Betsy brought up a question in the meeting on the 24th that was shot down at, oh, no, sorry, there's nothing you can do. Well, that's not only unacceptable to Patent Township, that's unacceptable to most of the 12 organizations. I don't know if it's all of them, but it's most of them. So we threw Betsy under the bus today at the meeting, and we nominated her to be the point person of all the solicitors, to now go back to the solicitor, or to the attorney that we hired to negotiate these contracts with Prospect 14 and Direct Energy, to go back and talk to that attorney and express our needs and wants, our wants and needs in the foreign language that I'll call attorney speak or legalese, that we don't quite understand, but they can talk it out and hash it out because, as I said earlier, I would not recommend signing these contracts until we get the okay of Patent Township's solicitor. So whether we hit these March and April dates really depends on how, what happens with any kind of negotiations between Betsy and the attorney that we had hired on the boards, or on the SPPA side. I did say in this morning's meeting that in hindsight, we should have brought the solicitors in on those negotiations much earlier in the process. But, you know, there was a desire to limit the number of people that were talking or speaking with this attorney, so. But in hindsight, certainly, and I said, if somebody calls us up and says, hey, we want to, we want to do an SPPA with our 12 organizations, my recommendation would be bringing your solicitors early in the contract negotiations so that you don't fall into this, because I think this is going to put us behind in the March and April timeframe. So with that, I will answer any questions that anybody might have, or I will at least attempt to do.
Are there any questions from the board at this time? I, my question is to Betsy, being thrown under the bus, did you accept?
Say that again?
Oh, Betsy accepted being thrown under the bus, yes.
Yes, I believe Betsy did.
All right.
I was being facetious. I don't think we threw her under the bus without her knowledge of being, yeah, written up.
Well, we thank you in advance. Any other questions from the board at this time?
I guess comments. Are there going to be lambs on the premises?
So this picture I have told, and we're going to, we'll just put it on there. This is a picture of the UAJA.
I want to negotiate that.
Array. And apparently, they do have a sheep.
They do, I've seen them.
Over there, that grazes. In our case, I don't believe we're going to have any lions on. We are going to have certain vegetation, some pollinators are going to be over there.
Just a second.
But I don't believe that we will have any lions on. Much to many people's surprise.
My second question is, is it going to be in the spray area? We're going to put some BTK down there for the spongy malls? I don't want anything compromising these panels, okay? So you talked about snow covering it, and I want no larvae covering it, so we need to hire the local kids to do some shoveling and pay them like $5?
They could come in and they could brush it off. I agree with you. I have a hard time doing that with the ones on my roof because I have to get up there to do it, but yeah, I agree with you. I could hire some local kids to do that for me.
Okay, any other, any other questions? Supervisor Whitman.
Sorry, publicly, acknowledge Larry and all the work. It's been five and a half years. We started from nothing, but, you know, ideas and headaches, basically. And it's been nothing but ideas and headaches since then. But part of me also really suspects that Larry loves manipulating those numbers. It's just his little thing with spreadsheets, but it's just that at the end of a meeting...
I can't believe anybody doesn't think that that's funny. Everybody really.
I mean, Betsy, I like watching you talk about, like, you're a really good educator.
You are never more animated than when you're talking about this stuff. I was going to use another word there, but I didn't.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been my honor to be on this SPPA group.
Well, we thank you, Larry, on that one. So this is just informational. Moving on, if there's no other questions, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda at this time?
I think I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second and then go into discussion? Betsy, I hear you.
Yes, sorry. I'm going to ask a real quick question. Is the Dodge Durango electric?
It is not.
But it's not, it's not a, technology isn't there yet?
Correct. Yes, we, we've struggled to find anything.
Okay, so rather than pull it from, I just, I knew that was the answer. I meant to call you earlier. And then the last thing was, I thought Elliot, that you, I know you volunteered to work on the school committee, but I thought you also said you wanted to be the alternate on the search for the COG director, if it came up. Maybe, maybe you didn't.
Susan volunteered for the school committee.
Yes, thank you. I know she volunteered for the school, but then Elliot in the notes is that he volunteered to be an alternate for the school committee. But I thought he volunteered to be the alternate for the selection of the ED, but maybe not. I just wanted to acknowledge that if you did.
Yeah.
Is that, yes, you did?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so that should be added to the minutes. So maybe we should pull that one, the minutes.
Well, I can just make the no.
Okay, perfect. And so I just, yeah, just for the record. Okay, that's it.
That's it? All right, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. All right, next on the agenda is management report.
So I'll give you a full report at the next meeting, but I did get an email from CADA seeking a letter of support. They're applying for a federal grant to do a system-wide transit stop safety and ADA accessibility study. They've been trying to do this and get funding for this for a couple of years. So if you're okay with that, I will write a letter of support from the township.
What's the board's pleasure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is committee reports. Are there any report from the board members that you would like to speak on at this time? All right, the only one I have is the public safety was scheduled for yesterday, and we have rescheduled it. We canceled it yesterday and rescheduled it for February 27th, which we will, we will be speaking on for March and February. Seeing no other committee reports, next is other business. Seeing no other business, next on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Both to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Quick, can I say something?
Just quickly, again, I don't want to get into the apologizing realm.
I do feel that I was a little flippant today, and so I do want to acknowledge that. I just get very protective of our people. Yes, that's it. And people who are harmed and injured. All right, I'm done.
I agree. If you're apologizing, I guess I am because I told them to bring it.
I had no threat.
But in all, all reality, we are very passionate about Patent Township and our residents and our staff. So if my vice chair is apologizing, I too will step up to apologize. But moving on.
I second.
Happy Valentine. Happy Valentine's Day. And I, I got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you, CNET. And this meeting is now adjourned.